Good evening, everyone. I'm happy to call to order this meeting of the Bellingham City Council. We'll begin with some announcements about upcoming meetings. The Bellingham City Council meets all requirements of the State of Washington Open Meetings Act. If you are able, will you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
April Barker.
Here.
Dan Hamel.
Here.
Jane Knudsen.
Here.
Michael Lillquist.
Here.
Roxanne Murphy.
Here.
Pinky Vargas.
Here.
Terry Borneman.
Here.
Okay, great. We will start this evening with a public hearing, and this public hearing testimony will be on this topic only. Following the public hearing, we will have our 15-minute public comment, and that'll be your time to address anything that's on your mind. So, the public hearing is to consider draft ordinance establishing regulations for the deployment of small cell facilities in the right-of-way. And I'll turn it over to Ted Carlson from Public Works.
Excellent, thank you. Ted Carlson, Public Works Department, along with Matt Stamps from the City Attorney's Office. Council will recall that earlier this year, back in March, staff came before council and presented on efforts to establish a small cell ordinance that would create the process, the rules, and regulations for citing small cell sites within the public right-of-way. That the existing rules and regulations for citing cell towers really apply to macro towers, the large towers. The rules and regulations are located in Chapter 20 of the Bellingham Municipal Code, which is a land-use chapter, really aimed at off-right-of-way facilities that oftentimes require a conditional use permit and don't really apply very well to small cells. Of course, that technology wasn't contemplated at the time, so we do need to move forward with the process to create new rules and regulations. We have developed a draft ordinance, received some comments back from folks, as that's been distributed out throughout the community here tonight to have the public hearing and hopefully receive more testimony and incorporate those comments into the ordinance and come back to council the future work session for further discussion. So, with that, I was going to turn it over to Matt Stamps. He's going to do a very brief presentation, similar to the one earlier this year, but to let folks know where we're at in the process today.
Yeah, thank you. Matt Stamps, City Attorney's Office. And as Ted mentioned, this is a similar presentation to one given a few months ago. We've added a little bit of detail, but we'll try to move through it pretty quickly. The idea being to give the public as much background information as we could prior to the, or as part of this public hearing. Let's see, we'll start with what is small cell. It's like the name implies, it's small. It's much smaller than a macro facility, you know, a traditional cell tower lattice, multi-legged, a tower several hundred feet tall at times. Whereas, small cell is small enough to attach to existing infrastructure in the right-of-way, like power poles, telephone poles, city streetlights as well. And the intent is, as I understand them, is to expand network coverage and capacity as well. So, here's just a visual demonstration of a comparison between a macro cell tower and a small cell tower, which are typically between 25 feet and 45 feet tall, is where you'd locate the antenna on a street light pole or power pole. They're much lower powered, so they're often more to cover the same area. Place closer together. One of the benefits of small cells, I understand it, is that it's good at providing data coverage, whereas macro towers are not as capable of that. Good in higher-density areas or areas with a lot of topography challenges. The small cell communicate one to the next. And there's, oh, by the way, I know there's a representative from Verizon here tonight, so technical questions, maybe he would be able to answer those a little better than I could. Oh, going back one slide here. My understanding is that they're not, the intent is not to replace macro towers altogether, but rather they would complement one another. You're still going to have macro cell towers, which are typically located on rooftops or private property, and those work in tandem with small cell. And the reason for small cell is, I believe council received a letter from Verizon today that fully, more fully discussed this, is as you've seen over the last, you know, six, seven, eight years, there's been a massive increase in data usage, and that requires kind of a different approach, as I understand it, to providing cell coverage. And small cell is well positioned for that. And it's also been identified by the FCC and industry groups as a kind of a key element of moving towards 5G coverage. Don't ask me to tell you what 5G is exactly. It's the next-generation service, and what I'm told is that for the time being, you're going to see both these small cells work with 4G and 5G at the same time. Here's a, just a demonstrative of what's involved in a small cell, the components of it. This is a power pole, or telephone pole, I believe. You've got the small cell antennas shown at the top. You've got fiber conduit attaching to those antennas. Dark fiber listed here, that just means leased fiber from usually a third-party provider. That's a key element of running one of these small cell units. You've got radios, power disconnect, all located on the pole there. It's kind of hard to see there. There's some other pictures coming up here in a minute. You can see a little better. This is an example of a proposal, proposed site here in Bellingham from Mobility, which is a small cell infrastructure provider. They provide infrastructure to clients like Sprint. This is down on Harris Avenue, I believe. You can see here, existing streetlight. And here's the proposed infrastructure. You've got the antenna at the top there. I believe that's a radio here, and then some associated equipment there. Again, another proposal here from Mobility. This is over by the New Walgreens on Sammish. You've got the, again, the antenna on top and associated equipment down here, a little lower on the pole. And this also, you can see here, this would be a replacement pole. You can see the actual pole itself has been made taller to accommodate, to get the antenna up to where it needs to be, and I believe to get the necessary separation here from these wires. Again, just another example of a small cell here. You've got a little close-up on what the radio looks like and the associated equipment here, also pole-mounted. This is, this one, you'll see when we get to the proposed ordinance, which is kind of more in my wheelhouse to talk about, but we've got some concealment and camouflaging requirements, and this would be example of that. To minimize impact here, you've got the equipment concealed in the base of the pole here, and then this is a shroud covering the antenna and some of the other elements within that canister. Just an example of some options out there. This here's, again, proposed, City of Seattle. You can see a small cell components included in more of a historical light structure there. Thought to be a little more attractive, I suppose. Okay, so to get back to what Ted was saying, our, we've actually received permit applications from small cell providers, and, but we don't really have the regulations to process those applications. So, the first place you'd look is to BMC 2013. Like Ted said, that is our wireless sighting regulation. It predates small cell. It's all geared towards macro towers on private property. You really can't use it for cellular devices in the right-of-way due to setback requirements in the code. It just doesn't work. Doesn't distinguish macro towers from small cells. They didn't exist yet. They don't, it doesn't distinguish between facilities in the right-of-way versus facilities on private property. That section of code has cumbersome procedural requirements. It requires a public hearing for each installation and a conditional use permit for each installation. So, as, you know, small cell, the idea is this can be high-volume, and that just won't work. So, new regulatory frameworks is needed. The proposed ordinance that's in your packet would exempt small cell from 2013. Just make that explicit, that we're not going to regulate under 2013. That's going to remain in place for macro towers on private property. Instead, small cell will be regulated under the brand-new Chapter 1316, which adopts a small cell permit process. That would be administered by Public Works rather than Planning, which is consistent with how all other utilities are regulated in the right-of-way. And it works in tandem with our franchise code. And the franchise code is what providers like electric companies, gas companies, cable companies, they obtain a franchise. That lays out, it's a contract with the city, passed by ordinance, that lays out the general obligations of the parties and the rights to operate within the right-of-way. But then, like all other franchises, when the provider actually goes to install a specific something in the ground, they pull a construction permit. The difference here is they would pull a small cell permit for each installation, and we've got regulations drafted to say what those small cells must look like, how big they can be, and whatnot. So, like I said, you've got the franchise plus the small cell permit. Some goals of the new regulations. Ensure public safety and convenience. Maintain the right-of-way for its primary intended purpose of transportation, but allow small cell installations that don't interfere unreasonably with that primary purpose. There are safety concerns that are built in, wind, ice, seismic load, certifications from engineers on these things. Must maintain ADA clearance. Must meet FCC RF, or radio frequency emission standards for safety. We'll talk about that a little bit more. I know some folks are interested in that. Federal law prohibits the city from taking account of RF emissions, to the extent that those RF emissions are consistent with FCC regulations on those emissions. So, what we've done in the ordinance is just to require certification from the applicant, from an engineer, saying that this device meets FCC RF emission standards. Second goal is to minimize visual, oops, clutter. The way we've gone about that is to require providers to use existing poles or to replace an existing pole rather than to install a new pole in the right-of-way to avoid just cumulative impact. There are exceptions for that. If they can demonstrate that there's no existing infrastructure within 500 feet, that would work, then the provider could look to installing a new pole. But they must maintain at least a distance of 180 feet from any other pole. Also, size and height limitations are embedded in here, and we can talk a little more specifically about those if you have questions. But essentially, it limits replacement poles to within, not going up more than 10 feet than the existing pole, subject to a maximum height of 50 feet. To give you a sense of that, most, I think, PSE poles are somewhere between 35 and 39 to 40 feet above ground level right now. So, you're already about 40 feet up. This could add another 10 feet. Requires stealth and concealment techniques, like painting the, having the equipment flush-mounted to the pole as much as possible, limiting standoffs from the pole, painting the equipment to match the pole, building equipment into the interior of the pole when possible, burying, if any, equipment cabinets, requiring them to be buried rather than sitting on top of the ground, things like that. Yeah, here's actually the next slide had those height limitations right here. The volume limitations are listed below there, and those are taken out of the state law definition of a small cell device. And many cities around the state are using these size limitations. I believe somewhere like 20 to 25 cities have now adopted small cell regulations in the last few months, and that's where this comes from. The antenna enclosure being three cubic feet or less, the equipment enclosure being 17 cubic feet or less. So, this is all consistent, as you might imagine, telecommunications and small cell in general are heavily regulated, at both the federal and state level, and there's pretty stringent requirements put on cities. Cities still have the right to regulate, but within limits, and these are some of those limits. Cities cannot unreasonably discriminate among providers in the regulations, cannot unreasonably deny any provider use of the right-of-way. We can't regulate the services or business operations of the provider. We can't prohibit equipment based on RF emissions if those emissions are compliant with FCC regulations. And we also are prohibited from imposing a franchise fee. Like, you can collect fees for application review and that type of administrative work, but not just, not like a lease rate. That's different when it comes to attachment to city light poles, which I think is the final slide here. Yep, so the regulations here would allow attachment to city light poles if the provider executes a lease agreement with the city. And that's an administrative decision, and it's one that, it's more of a business-type capacity when they want to attach to a city light pole. And in that situation, the city could charge rent, and has more discretion on, really, all aspects of that attachment. And the less C that's going to, would attach, would be responsible for complying with all regulatory requirements. They'd still have to go through the permit process like any other attachment. Let's see, I think that's the final slide. So, I'd be happy to take any questions before we, I guess, turn it over to public comment.
Counsel, any quick questions before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, so we'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and this is your opportunity to discuss the small cell ordinance, and we'll go ahead and start with the names.
There's one person signed up, Gregor Gadba.
It's not an easy one. Hi, I'm Gregor Gadba with Verizon Wireless at 3245 158th Avenue Southeast Bellevue. I just wanted to come in and talk real quickly about the code change that we were working with Matt on, and to give you some information, a little bit more further than what you're going to learn or have learned. As far as the use of utility poles, we and the industry, be it us or our competitors, are at the mercy of the pole owner. So, the requirement of extending the pole higher isn't necessarily something we want. It's something that they may put upon us in order for us to put our antennas up properly. And Matt Stacky showed, you know, for us, the sweet spot is anywhere from 25 to 45 feet. We don't want to be any higher than that for our antennas. So, for example, working with PSE, they do require us to install our antennas on pole top. It's their requirement upon us, and once we identify a pole, they work with us to see if that pole can handle it. Is there enough, is there already a lot of equipment on there? And then, once they've assessed it, they determine whether or not they have to increase the height. So, what they will do is they provide us, in essence, about 10 feet in order to get the proper clearances that we need for the standards. But sometimes what they do as well, and not a lot of people know, is they may add an additional 10 feet for themselves so that they have a place for future use. Oops, sorry. So, there could be 10 feet for us or a different carrier, plus an additional 10 feet, which could add 20 feet to the pole. And again, that's their requirement. So, I know the code right now says 10 feet with a max of 50. We're looking if there's an opportunity to say, we will not, the pole will be no higher than 60 feet. Again, that's just to make sure that we can accommodate getting our antennas on the pole in a right fashion so that it works. Because, again, if we get higher than 45 feet, we start to get path loss on the, on the small cells. It doesn't function properly, and then it doesn't provide the service that it needs. So, we would rather have no small cell than have antennas higher than what we can actually accommodate, you know, at about 45 feet. One other option that we've asked, when we've worked with Matt on, is as far as strand mounting. It's a new, new technology. Basically, it's a radio and antenna, all in one combination. It's about a nine-by-nine box. It can hang on the fiber strand between two poles, anywhere from three to six feet from the pole. It's much smaller, more aesthetically pleasing, and it also would provide an opportunity for 5G, depending on how that technology pans out. So, just wanted to let you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else wishing to address the council about small cell? Please come forward.
I'll skip my credentials this time. I came here tonight mostly to talk about DIG-Once, but I do want to address some things in the small cell policy. I want everybody to really understand what this policy really means when the FCC forces a community like ours to follow the regulations. I mean no disrespect to this gentleman from Verizon. I know what it's like to work for a big telecom company and have to pay your bills. But, but, the removal of a land-use policy is absolutely insane. It means that they can come in, once they establish a site on a pole or whatever, and they could essentially do within FCC, which are federal regulations, which thanks to Ajit Pai, keep getting looser all of the time. They can do whatever they want with those poles after that, and in some communities they have. Small cells decrease property values around them, and there are some questions as to their effect on people's health. I believe the smaller cells are probably safe, but I think if we start putting gigantic clusters together, we probably need to do a whole lot more research on that and to their safety. I ask that we actually take some real time to consider, so bring in some more experts. Why would so many experts in the community, and again, no offense to you, sir, but why are we referring people specifically to Verizon? That shows an inappropriate link, inappropriate link to a giant anti-net neutral, anti-first amendment, big telecom. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to turn it back over to the council. Councilmember Lillquist.
I would like for us to refer this to the committee, and there's a couple of things that I would like to discuss when we do that. First of all, this has to do with how we can influence small cell distribution as regulator of the right-of-way. I'd like to also discuss how we can, we can have influence over it as owner of the pole. So, some of the poles we own, and over those poles, we might have greater authority, right? And I want to be able to discuss what we might do on poles that we own. I'd also like to discuss whether as a regulator, we can add some language that has to do with cumulative impacts, or the consideration of multiple sightings on the same pole, or multiple facilities put on nearby poles. How can we, one by one, you might not be able to say yes or no, the impacts are negative or minimal, but as a whole, cumulatively, can we write that in, how can we address that in a regulation? I would also want to know if there's some area or room for us to say no to the sighting facilities based on community design and character reasons. I'm thinking of, for example, Fairivon Parkway, where we put up banners and we enter, we welcome people into the community with an aesthetic show along our light poles. In that location, could we say no to small cell for those reasons of community character? The fact that we've invested in creating community character, set a legitimate reason for, in that case, on our city-owned poles, to say, sorry, no. And then finally, I'd like to see some data on just simply the number of light poles owned by the city, the number of utility poles not owned by the city, the number of times the city puts our lights on someone else's pole, and the times that other people put their facilities on our old pole. I think all those would be useful in going over this ordinance.
Councilmember Lillquist.
So, if that was a motion, Michael, to refer it.
One moment, please. Would you like to refer this to committee of the whole? What would be your preference?
I think Public Works, because that's the department. So, I would like a motion, make a motion, move it to Public Works.
There's a second. Okay, great.
That's what I was in the process of doing when you cut me off. Thank you.
I take it in process. Councilmember Borneman, would you like to address something?
What?
Would you like to address something? I'm following the further discussion.
No, I said I was second, that's what I was doing. I was seconding it when I was.
Okay, great. Further discussion.
Cut off.
Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, next, we will move on to our 15-minute public comment, and this is your opportunity to discuss thoughts on your mind about the city. And we ask you to keep it to three minutes. We ask for no cheering, no booing, no hissing. We respect everybody's input and opinion, and we will go ahead and start with our list of names.
The first three names are Everett Barton, Andrew Lindsey, and John Humphrey.
Good evening, council. I haven't been here in about nine or 10 months. So, first thing I'd like to do, with the council's permission, is to give a standing O to Mayor Lindell and the council for allowing the Rainbow Bridge to be painted. And so, if anyone wants to join me, I'm breaking the rules. I know I'm breaking the rules. Okay. Now, I had a very successful, and it still is a successful April, and I'll email you about it, rental over in Maplewood, Maplewood Avenue, which I'm in the process of whittling down from a 2010 foreclosure, getting rid of empty nest stuff. It's hard because I'm lame and have to carry it all away, but when I'm, when my lease is up on September 28th, I will be going to Grand Junction, Colorado, to live with my daughter in her Section 8 house. And I put out the, I put out the distant early warning thing for them to put a tiny house on the property so that, so that Bumpa can be somewhere and not interfering in the lives of my two grandkids that are remaining teenage grandkids. They don't want Bumpa around all the time. So, I'll be there from October to February. Part of the, part of the thing, part of my mission in going to Grand Junction is not only to be with my grandkids, the two remaining grandkids in the home, needs to, I need to speak into their lives, yada, yada. And so, but also is to investigate the possibility of Bellingham and Grand Junction becoming sister cities. Now, I know that we probably have a sister city in Japan. Every, every community does. But, the idea of taking a city in the Intermontane region, from Helena and Missoula down to Albuquerque and the Arizona cities, that's the Intermontane region, is an idea of creating some, some commonality and some solidarity in increasingly global warming conditions and possible earthquake or whatever might happen in the Intermontane region or out here. And, and the thing about Grand Junction is they have sculpture on the corners of their streets, too. So, the idea is to take pictures of the sculptures on the street corners in Grand Junction and to take pictures of the sculpture on the corners in Bellingham and start cross-seminating it, and then, you know, with support, you know, writers talking about different events, generate more art and crafts stuff for Grand Junction. They're, they're beginning, but they're not like, not like Bellingham. So, so doing that more, and so, my email, I'm running out of time, eB A R T O N 39@Yahoo.com. Any ideas to go along with this? You can contact me that way. Thank you.
Okay, good. Counsel? Hello, my name is Andrew Lindsey. I'm a former nuclear submarine mechanic who moved to Bellingham to attend Western in 2012, where I completed a degree in chemistry while doing materials research. I am here to talk to you about Bellingham's communication infrastructure and the policies that surround it. I was introduced to these issues by local activist, John Humphrey. Talking to John about these issues, I've been impressed with his level of expertise in information technology. John is the kind of guy who will talk for an hour about microprocessor architecture. He has decades of experience in computing and networking, and is the one person I called when I needed to build custom hardware using parts from a local radio museum. Radio was the first wireless communications technology, the ancestor of today's Wi-Fi and cell phones. When radio was first developed in 1895, the telegraph had been around for 50 years. Telegraphes allowed for large amounts of information to be transported over long distances. Radio also works over long distances and without the necessity of wires. Well then, after radio was developed, why did wired communications such as the telegraph continue to be developed? It's simple. Anyone who has a car radio knows that it is, there is a beginning and an end to the radio spectrum. This means that there are a limited number of stations or channels that are usable for radio communications. This holds true for other radio communications such as Wi-Fi and 5G. Telegraphes and their successors, such as landline phones and today's fiber optic cables, don't have this problem. If more stations are needed, another line can be laid down, and the amount of information carried can be increased by a factor of two, 10, or even 100. However, these additional lines can be unsightly when attached to existing telephone poles. In effort to reduce the visibility of such cables, cities such as Bellingham have taken to burying their fiber optic cable. This is all well and good until the city grows and the need for more cables to carry more information increases. Then, the street has to be dug up all over again. Some cities, such as neighboring Mount Vernon, have come up with a clever solution to this problem. They have established a DIG-Once policy where the city buries conduit which they run the cable through. When, when more cable is needed, the conduit is opened and another cable is pulled through. However, Mount Vernon has already successfully implemented this policy and documentation is ready to go. However, Bellingham has not met with Mount Vernon to discuss adopting this successful DIG-Once policy. Why? Is it because Bellingham already has the best internet service in the country? Are we so renowned for our infrastructure that we have tech companies beating down our doors to move here with high-paying jobs that would increase tax revenues to the city? Or perhaps, high-bandwidth services such as video streaming have been decreasing in popularity with the city's voting residents? What is clear is that high-speed fiber optic-based broadband is a necessity, and it would, is a necessity required to attract tax revenue generating tech companies and to keep internet-hungry voters happy. A proven DIG-Once policy borrowing, borrowed from neighboring cities such as Mount Vernon is the cheapest and surest way to increase revenues and increase votes for you and your seats on the city council. Thank you.
My credentials are well-known, so I'll cut to the chase. The DIG-Once policy is a common, is a common-sense policy that simply states that we will put inexpensive conduit and fiber in for public use every time a repair that requires excavation is made. It reduces the cost of installation by 90%, and pays for itself via leasing. Hundreds of other communities have done this to their benefit, and therefore does not cost the taxpayers millions and helps us address most of our social and economic issues. It's a win-win. We are fortunate to have next-door neighbors willing to help us out with documentation and expertise. and expertise in Mount Vernon and Skagja County who have already done this. Yet our Public Works Department and council haven't even had an official meeting with them, with the exception of Michael Lillyquist and Pinky Vargas. They have, of course, met many times with the big anti-net neutral, anti-first amendment telecoms that charge us the highest rates in the developed world for broadband. Some of the numbers quoted in the document posted today are crazy and conflict with numbers given to me by Public Works previously. They say a rotor ab fiber install will cost $1.5 million, when not even two years ago, they said a Holly Street repair was $50,000 per block, which works out to $400,000 a mile. Other similar-sized communities have done this for between $100,000 and $200,000 a mile. They won't even name the engineer who gave them the estimate in the document, and there are no real specifics. Public Works has produced a shady document. This warrants a second look. Are they trying to shock the council and community into inaction? The short answer, I believe, is yes. If you do the numbers, their arguments don't add up. We need this resource and will continue to need it as everything broadband-related needs fiber moving forward to work well. On wireless, since we've been intentionally given too little time to speak, I'll just say this. In 1936, the Rural Electrification Act brought Americans electricity via physical power lines. While wireless may be convenient, it is not equivalent to a wired network, especially in our environment. Needs to be backed up by lots of fiber to work well and only achieves the advertised speeds under very specific conditions. The safety and reliability of any network are directly connected to how much fiber there is hooked up to it. So our municipal network, which serves our schools and other critical services, needs to be expanded as well. The presented document, as Ajit Pai and the worst FCC in American history suggests, totally removes the land-use policy, meaning that regardless of what other parts of the document say, the wireless providers like Verizon could do whatever they want. There is no good reason for this. There are better solutions that benefit everyone. So should we keep a land use? So we should keep a land-use policy. Also, the small cell document shows us that Public Works lied to our faces about the state of our existing publicly-owned infrastructure. They said it wasn't really that useful, and they needed to do an audit, but in this document, they are allowing anti-net neutral, anti-first amendment companies like Verizon to lease that infrastructure. So turns out, it is useful after all, like we already knew. They lied about it because they don't answer to the public first, which is the biggest problem.
The next three speakers are Lisa Pap, Beers Sorenzia, and Michael Barris.
Hello, Lisa Pap, Bellingham, Washington. I encourage the city and the Public Works Department to follow an established dig-once policy. It makes a lot of sense to me. It seems like this common sense policy will help the city to start installing inexpensive publicly-owned resources for use whenever a repair is needed, for example, a street repair. Go ahead and install the conduit and cable to be used in the future for fiber optic broadband. As John mentioned, I understand that many of the costs, up to 90% of the costs associated with broadband infrastructure, have to do with excavation, so the dig-once policy will help mitigate having to dig again and again and increasing costs. Our monopoly-provided, overpriced fiber frankly makes us unattractive to many new companies looking to move here. I just saw a list recently on fastcompany.com that ranked Bellingham as one of the 10 worst cities to start a business, and that's 2018 article. One of the largest growth sectors in our economy is small internet-based businesses. They won't locate in Bellingham or Watcom County if they can use inexpensive internet elsewhere. Access to broadband addresses also many of our social issues, job finding, job retraining, education, dealing with homeless issues, and quality of life for all of us. Broadband levels the playing field with access for all, from businesses to all residents, including low-income residents. Thank you.
My name is Blick Sorenzia, and I live in the Sandwich neighborhood. Fellow city council members, I'd like to share with you my concerns regarding internet access in our city. At my home on 34th Street, there is only one choice for high-speed internet, Comcast, and they've been underwhelming, to say the least, with high prices, inconsistent speeds, regardless of my device and how it's hooked up, and terrible customer service. But there's a way to change that, to allow other internet providers or local government faction like the Watcom PUD or city to provide internet service, and it starts with the dig-once policy. The truth is, the city of Bellingham has already invested our taxpayer dollars into their own private network with fiber optics for municipal use, but has shown a lack of willingness to consider connecting, you know, homes and small businesses to that network for the purposes of receiving high-speed internet. Other counties like Shiloh and Douglas County and the city of Mount Vernon have implemented these kind of muni broadband programs with terrific success, which has opened the door for job opportunities, improved education in and out of the classroom, access to news sources, and economic prosperity for their towns. I'd like to support the concept of a dig-once policy, which would make it more cost-effective, taking advantage of each and every opportunity to build out a network, giving us another choice besides Comcast or Quest DSL. Thank you for your time.
My name is Michael Barris. I live at 3040 Silvern Lane in the Silver Beach neighborhood, and this is about the safe space recommendation you heard this afternoon. Most of you know that for the past nine or 10 months, I've been working with some members of the Watcom Human Rights Task Force on a proposal that is markedly similar to what Moonwater presented you this afternoon, and what we would like to see is an independent, empowered, transparent, and easily accessible ombudsperson function in the city of Bellingham. When I first finished her report, I thought, "Her report is eerily similar to what we have been talking to you about." The truth is that our initiative is eerily similar to what she presented to you, and I thought it was a great report. We have met with four of you in person. We met with Mayor Kelly about three weeks ago. We've got written communication back from another one of you, and we just appreciate the openness and the candidness that you spent time with us on. I am so proud to live in Bellingham. I think the services that we provide are remarkable. I think what you do is fabulous, and what we as a community do is fabulous. But in terms of receiving complaints, disagreements, concerns, I don't think we do a very good job. And in listening to members of council and listening to lots of meetings, I know that there's disagreement about if there is an actual problem, and if so, how severe it is. The Human Rights Task Force believes that we have a significant problem, and I will tell you personally that I believe that the current impasse between the city and some of the advocacy groups around immigration sanctuary undocumented issues is partly a result of not having a very good set of ways for people to express concerns. I'm not foolish enough to believe that we could resolve all concerns through an ombuds person office, but I think we could resolve quite a number of them. I'm running out of time, so I'm just going to say that our group believes that we want to have an ombuds person available for all sets of city services, not just policing, but the full gamut. We want to work with you, we will lobby, we want to be citizen advocates, we want to be helpers, we'd like to join in this effort, and please do everything you can to make this thing happen. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Bob Johnston, Bob Hayes, and Paul K. Bell.
My name's Bob Johnston. I'm a resident of Bellingham, a husband, a father, a retired college prof, and I'm also a member of the Watcom Human Rights Task Force. And Michael, thank you for that. It's tough to follow. I want to thank the city council and the mayor for your initiative to review the processes for dealing with complaints and the Watcom Dispute Resolution Center for their report, which they delivered to the council this afternoon. The initiative and the report are timely and important. I'd like to emphasize just one point about this initiative, and that is, please don't settle for the status quo. I have no doubt that Bellingham City employees are honest, well-intentioned, and committed to our community and the people who live here, but dealing with complaints can be time-consuming and frustrating. The easy solution is to leave in place processes that help complaints disappear. Factors such as conflict of interest, power differential between a complainant and the person receiving the complaint, accessibility of information about complaint processes, lack of centralized oversight, fear of retaliation, and even simple reluctance on the part of an organization's representatives to take complaints seriously can contribute to complaints being discouraged or getting sidetracked and lost. If I had a complaint about a negative experience with a city officer or official, I would most likely walk into that office or look at the city website to see what avenues might be available. If you try either of these, I believe you will find significant obstacles. City offices do not typically display information that is visible and accessible to the public. The city website might lead you to various pieces of information and some actual avenues to register a complaint, but this information is scattered and in many cases difficult to find. In some cases, the complainant must identify himself or herself and submit the complaint to the same office or department their complaint is against. For someone already discouraged by a negative experience, these obstacles might be enough to make them give up altogether. Information and processes should be more visible, more easily accessible, and more centralized. In addition, to help remove concerns about conflict of interest or retaliation, complainants should have more than one avenue available, and where appropriate, it should be clear that confidentiality can be protected. A city ombuds office or auditor's office to track complaints and where a complaint could be submitted directly would be one good option. Such an office could also provide a degree of oversight for complaints that might otherwise be kept internal and go unnoticed. I will suggest that poorly organized processes, built-in obstacles, indifference, and lack of oversight have doubtless played a role in some of the recent ugly scandals in regional and national news. The Watcom Dispute Resolution Center report contains many good suggestions. Please, let's take them seriously and move ahead to implement a best practices complaint process for Bellingham. Thank you for the opportunity to comment and also for the work you do on our behalf.
My name is Bob Hayes. I live at 321 Park Ridge Road in Bellingham. And I spoke about the dig-once policy approximately two months ago, and I'm back because I learned a lot in the interim from my first meeting with you and today. One of the things I learned is that in order for those of us in favor of the dig-once movement to get an idea of how much fiber the city had, we had to file a Freedom of Information request to get that information from the city. That doesn't seem right to me. That seems like we, the citizens, who ask you, the city government, for information should be made available without having to go to such extreme measures to get what we have asked for, which is a reasonable request. That suggests to me that the ombudsman is sorely needed. This meeting, you started with a presentation with the city manager, city works manager, Mr. Carlson, the city attorney, talking about Verizon and their desire for small cell here in Bellingham. I have owned and operated a business providing internet access for years. Through FiberCloud, I had two racks of servers. I provided businesses, most of you would know, with their ability to reach out to customers, to other individuals with whom they do business. I know what it takes to run a network. I want you to know that there are people in the community, not only myself, Mr. Humphrey, you have somebody, a large group of people called the Bellingham Linux Users Group, who have for 20 years now provided the city with revenue from an annual Linux Fest event at Bellingham Technical College, which now has almost 2,000 people that show up for a two-day weekend nerd-out on everything related to networking, computing, programming, robotics, and other things. About eight years ago or so, the city of Bellingham entered a competition with Google to get internet access, fiber, throughout the city. The arguments the city put forth at that time included business, it'd be better for business, it'd be better for education. Well, here we are today. It's 2018. We can implement a dig-once policy. We don't have to have a $300,000 study from someone else. We have a city to the south that's already implemented that process. I encourage you to take this seriously and do not capitulate to big business.
Time's up, sir.
The citizens of Bellingham deserve to be heard.
You have other speakers to hear from. Time is up. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Paul Campbell. I live at 2219 D Street. I was employed by AT&amp;T for over 20 years. I was involved in a number of computer and data communications projects, including being a data communications representative for AT&amp;T in the international forums such as the ITU, which is where the specifications for wireless like 4G and 5G came from. The American Civil Liberties Union published a 21-page paper in March of this year. I thought it was strange that a civil liberties organization would become involved in what I considered a technical issue. In the past, communication providers were called common carriers. They were obliged to provide reliable, low-cost service, delivering information from sender to receiver with respect for the customer privacy. Common carrier no longer exists. Telecommunication providers have successfully pressured Washington DC into abandoning crucial internet provisions, including network neutrality and privacy. Washington State has enacted internet protections, but it's not clear they can prevail against federal action. Bellingham can act to protect our community by developing agreements with network providers that will ensure privacy, affordability, and free speech protection to information without censorship. This is what the ACLU proposes. In the past, it would have been inconceivable that a community should be concerned with such issues, but the lack of adequate safeguards on the part of the FCC leaves a vacuum that we should fill. Customers pay for internet service, but they also serve a source of revenue when their personal data is mined. Under standard terms and conditions, customers have no choice but to accede to these terms. We have seen the rise of media empires in recent years, where the political view of the owner dominate the content. Some newspapers, radio, and TV have seen a similar growth, but the barrier to entry because of consolidation has seen the narrowing of choices. In many markets, communication services are offered by monopoly, duopoly, or some other opally. The internet is no longer a luxury, much like water is a necessity, but because of the lack of regulation, there are no safeguards to ensure freedom of expression, universal access for all, or privacy of personal information. The ACLU believes that the local government can and should provide network neutrality and privacy and access for all. We should be sure that we share our valuable resources, that we establish agreements that ensure that our rights are upheld. Bellingham should ensure that any agreements that we adopt will have adequate protection for reliable networks. Lastly, Bill Number 21937 notes an emphasis on providing 25 megabits.
Time's up. I'm sorry. Time's up. We have to move on to other speakers. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next three speakers, excuse me, Robert Clark, Lynette Allen, and Ray Portman. My name is Robert Clark, and many of you have met me before talking about community media, but what you don't know is that even before community media, I was a community broadband advocate. Over 15 years ago, I helped the small Oregon city that I lived in develop a municipally-owned broadband and cable television network that still exists today, providing quality service to its residents. To second what many of others have said, there is a wealth of expertise in the town that can help with driving policy and even understanding questions like Michael Liliquist, for example. He asked, "How do you develop influence over the distribution?" In my opinion, it's you provide the infrastructure and the service to the community, and that's how you get direct influence over how services are distributed, and you develop economic and even social capital that the citizens of the city, as well as Watcom County, can sorely benefit from. I strongly agree with the idea of a DIG ONCE policy and utilizing the Mount Vernon model so that we can implement it sooner rather than later. Also, I'd like to see some small step towards us developing a municipal enterprise, and I feel this could be it. So, please consider that proposal, and I look forward to any questions.
I'm Lynette Allen. I live at 3514 Northwest Avenue. Forty years I've been here, 12 years there at that address. Well, my priority concern is my health, and so I'm very concerned about the RF emissions because I have, myself and also many of my friends, many of who are elderly, are really experiencing just spikes of, these RFs go along with spikes of high blood pressure, dizziness, poor vision, and having to call 911 sometimes, many stroke, and so forth. And I have three friends who have also experienced this. So, I've put up my alarm all around. I have a very sunny apartment, and that's helped some. And I'm moving, partly because my new landlord put my rent up $375, but also because of these emissions. I really liked a lot of what was said tonight so far. And a long time ago, they started to do the fiber optics, and I was fourth then, and I'm fourth now, and we're all fiber optics because I may have to move to the outskirts of Washington to get away from all this stuff, but it's not serving me. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ray Portman. I've owned a business in this community for 30 years. All I do is fiber optics. It's my life. I know your fiber network better than you all know your own. It runs through my facility, all of it. Every communication that runs through this building runs through my house. So, when I hear information about the Bellingham Fiber Optic Network, I go, "Hello? Has anybody talked to me lately? Is there anything going on?" Because a lot of people don't know, but I started all this. In 1997, in agreement with the Port of Bellingham, we were the first public-private partnership with fiber in the nation. We run that today. It's their number-one ROI for the entire port. The PUD, the Watcom PUD, started. I was involved in that. That's the fiber that you bought from them in the Vista Ring. That was from the Watcom PUD network. I started the Mount Vernon network. I'm sorry. I'm the guy who did it. I went in and I told them, "This is what we need to do to make this work. This is how you can make this a return on investment versus spending all your time and money on buying equipment and engineers and all the talent that you need to do it." That's what we did. All we do is we do the engineering, the design, the deployment. They buy the 100-year asset called fiber optics. I love it. I'm heavily involved. I want to help the city do whatever they can do with it. But look inside your community. I mean, I'm here. Just pick up the phone and say, "Hey, come take a tour and see where all this stuff goes," because our community is great. And as far as communications, we really are well-connected. A lot of you just don't know. I mean, we've got wave broadband everywhere for all the businesses. CenturyLink, you need to look out your back door now because all those trucks that have been working have been putting up fiber taps behind every one of your houses. So, you can get fiber to your house today, gig fiber. Obviously Comcast. Well, I happen to own a cable TV business, so I understand cable and broadband and everything about Comcast. I support the Lummi Indian Reservation. We are the only provider out there that can pass more than 3 megabits per second to an entire populace. So, my motivation here is just to get people talking about the network, to make a positive impact if we can grow it. I think honestly, a Bellingham fiber network has sunsetted. It's well beyond being able to be feasible. But I'm here to help and do whatever I can. So, thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to address the council? Please come forward.
Amy Glasser, Bellingham, Washington. There's no places for, okay. Hello, everybody. It's Megan. There's no places for homeless people to keep their belongings safe, yet somehow some of the police officers in town were instructed to treat shopping carts like structures, thus they can't be on sidewalks. I'm aware of at least one person who had her cart confiscated, and I don't know where her stuff is, but I also don't know where she is, and I'm really concerned because that was her life in that cart. Next issue. RCW 38.40.120 says open carry groups cannot organize meetings or march in public with their weapons when they're not concealed. Yet the city attorney and police refuse to take that law seriously and do any enforcement. As we struggle with increased homelessness and gun violence, do we want to promote guns as a viable option for vulnerable people to protect themselves? The law is there for a reason. Instead of ticketing homeless people for smoking a joint, please use your resources more wisely by making our community safer by dealing with the guns and open carry issue. Number three. I thought the police were instructed to stop ticketing vehicles parked on streets with no parking restrictions, as long as they kept the area clean and weren't respectful to the neighbors. They're still getting ticketed. They're still getting ticketed, which means if they don't pay their tickets, they'll get warrants, they'll get arrested, and there's that cycle. Number four. DIG ONCE policy. Oh, my God, people, have you not heard enough about what John's saying and everybody else? Use your experts in this community. I don't think, I'm sure none of you are as smart about this as John or many other people, at least John. Listen, just do it now. Number four. Five. This was actually an extra one. That ombudsman idea is phenomenal, and boy, does this city need oversight? Whether it's come to police actions, or homeless people's rights, or indigenous people's rights, or anybody who is not white and affluent, needs protection and more than you're giving them. And last, Mayor Linville. Do you remember about a month ago, you gave credit for the new shower truck to the mission? I believe it's time for you to make a public comment to on the record stating that you were incorrect, that truck was from homes now, not later. That's our shower truck, and we really, really, I know y'all don't like us, but come on. We did that. We're the ones who did that in like a month and a half or less than. Give us credit for the few things that we've been able to do, and please set the record straight, Mayor Linville. It was not the mission. It was us. Thank you.
Okay. We will now move to our council standing committee meetings. The first one is Public Works and Natural Resources, and that was chaired by Councilmember Knutson.
Thank you, President Murphy. We had three items. The first item was Municipal Broadband Policies, Goals, and Interests. Council discussion on DIG ONCE has raised questions related to the goals and interests of the city in providing municipal broadband for the community beyond current offerings from private providers. Council discussion and direction on policy related to municipal broadband is necessary. To inform and assist the council with this policy discussion, a formal review of the practical and financial feasibility of municipal fiber in Bellingham is recommended. The development of business model, capital plan, financial analysis, staffing, and operation structure are essential to starting a new government service. A study similar to the one prepared for Spring Hills, Kansas, would require a new general fund expenditure. We heard from Ted Carlson today, and it was moved by the committee to direct staff to bring back a proposal for a study to be included in the 2019-20 budget and ISO move.
Second. Motion has been made, and I'll give the second to Councilmember Bornham. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously.
The next one is the DIG ONE policy. A nationwide emphasis on expanding 25 MPBs broadband availability has led efforts to expand the use of municipal communication systems and rights-of-way for broadband infrastructure deployment. DIG ONCE policies are one measure to expand service by providing government-owned underground conduits for potential leasing to communication companies where broadband service is not available. Attached for discussion is a draft departmental policy on providing additional conduits for possible future use. The draft document was revised following the April 23, 2018 discussion. Staff are requesting further input from council, probably distributing for input from private industry and general public. This afternoon, the committee recommended that we send this over to a work session on August 20. That was the direction given on that. The next item is, that wasn't a motion, it was just direction. We had a report on the July 16 Lake Watcom Policy Group. I gave that afternoon, this afternoon. We talked about three policies: tributation, lake monitoring, review of the stormwater capital projects, update on the county Lake Watcom Utility Service funding area, and our Aquatic Invasive Species Act is still going on. We will have a future meeting on September 17 in the committee.
Thank you very much. Next, we will move on to planning and community development, and that was chaired by Councilmember Liliquist.
Thank you, President Murphy. We had one item before the Planning Community Development Committee. That was a review of an interlocal agreement between Watcom County and the city of Bellingham for the Bennett Bakerview Airport Drive annexation area. The annexation review process includes a procedural step by which we can amend the 2012 interlocal agreement with Watcom County. It has to do with annexation areas that contain roadways improvements that qualify for reimbursement. Basically, if in areas that we're about to annex, the county invests heavily in transportation infrastructure, we agree to basically buy them out for that on a prorated basis, and as kind of exchange for that, they design that infrastructure with future city needs in mind. There's a new project that was built recently for the total value of $100,000. It's right now prorated and has been sort of depreciated in value to $50,000 if the city annexes it. We have to update the interlocal agreement to include this particular project, and the reason we need to do this is we're in the middle of reviewing an annexation proposal for this part of town. The city council has not decided to annex this part of town, but if we do, this would be in place, and if and only if the city decides to annex this area, would we reimburse the county. This afternoon, the committee recommended adding this infrastructure project to the interlocal agreement, and ISO move.
Second. Okay. The motion has been made and seconded regarding the interlocal agreement with Watcom County for the Bennett Bakerview Airport Drive annexation area. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously.
End of committee.
Great. I will provide the report from committee of the whole, and I will try to make it swiftly. First item was official swearing-in of Bellingham Police Chief for a Day 2018, Kayden Taylor. This was an action to support Kayden Taylor in serving as a wonderful at-risk youth that is going to go with the police department and have a wonderful day of experiences, and we were very happy to support Kayden Taylor in getting all these experiences. That was for information only. The second item was introduction of Library Director Rebecca Judd. This was for information only. No action was taken, but we welcome Rebecca Judd as our library director. The third item was Safe Spaces Report. So, the Safe Spaces Report was information about how community members can provide, you know, basic complaints about the city in a very safe environment and different ways that we can do so. So, what the council decided to do earlier today was refer this issue to the Justice Committee, and ISO move. Okay. The motion has been made and seconded to refer the Safe Spaces Report for further discussion to the Justice Committee. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. The fourth item was Incarceration Prevention and Reduction Task Force Annual Report. This was for information only. No action was taken. Fifth item, approval of minutes. We have the meeting minutes for July 9.
Go move. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve these meeting minutes. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. The fourth item was Incarceration Prevention and Reduction Task Force Annual Report. This was for information only. No action was taken. Fifth item, approval of minutes. We have the meeting minutes for July 9.
Go move. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve these meeting minutes. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Older New Business. Councilmember Vargas.
I just wanted to acknowledge something that we received here at city council, and we received 57 postcards from the Birchwood neighborhood sent to us by Tina McKim, and we want to acknowledge your civic engagement and let you know that these postcards were sent to us in regards to concerns in the Birchwood neighborhood about the food desert. And we want to acknowledge that we are very concerned about solving this and trying to figure out how, we know this is affecting the neighborhood greatly, and how we can work together on those things. Although, we are very limited on what the city and the council can actually do about putting a new grocery store there, and which was what a lot of the comments were on the postcards, so we wanted to acknowledge that. And I also asked our city attorney, Peter Ruffato, to maybe explain a little bit about why we actually can't put a different grocery store, and we're trying to find other solutions like the Birchwood International Market and finding ways that we can help this community with the food desert issue, but this is a legal problem that we cannot address. Thank you, Peter.
Yeah. Peter Ruffato, City Attorney's Office. So, the question was posed, I think, I don't know, it's probably been two years or so, about what the city can do in terms of regulation. There was a concern raised about a non-compete. And the one thing that I'm fairly confident of is that we cannot sort of legislate on an existing agreement or an existing covenant with respect to a non-compete agreement. That was one of the items that was raised a couple of years ago. Secondly, when we took a look at it, that non-compete didn't actually prohibit that same space being used as a grocery store. At least, that's my understanding. Again, I took a look at it again today, but that was really, it was competition within the site itself, and so that's one of the things that I wanted to point out. And thirdly, when we looked, if you look at prospectively, could the city regulate in the future with respect to non-compete agreements? There really hasn't been a lot of experience in municipalities nationwide. There's been a couple jurisdictions that have tried that, but there hasn't been a lot of utilization of that type of regulation. But the one thing I'm confident is that there's nothing with respect to the non-compete that exists today that the city can really take action on.
Any other Older New Business? Councilmember Vargas.
Well, with that said, the international markets and other things to try to improve upon the area, and just to remind people what a diverse and interesting neighborhood it is, and hopefully maybe excite some local business owners that might want to come and help solve some of those problems. The neighborhood worked with the mayor and got approval. Some of you may have seen the bridge, what's called the Coal Mine Bridge, was painted in the colors of the rainbow, of course, during our Pride Month, but also, I think, well, I know that it was to say, "We appreciate all." And especially when you cross over that bridge, you're starting to get into the most diverse parts of Bellingham, and then if we all stand together, we can solve anything. And really, it was only about 300 people that came together. They funded it. They got permission from the city and did the permitting, and within two days, they accomplished painting that entire bridge. So, if there's ever a time in our public where you felt like nothing's going to be accomplished or we can't do it, that was two days, 300 people, and less than $2,000 donated, and mayor's approval, and it happened. So, I just really, I think beautification products, projects like that do so much more to lift up our community than we realize. It's just that feeling every time you go past. So, I did want to extend a thank you from the neighborhood, from all the businesses that contributed to the mayor for fast-tracking that and, I think, allowing that great opportunity for so many people that were frustrated with the loss of the grocery store to come together and do something really productive. So, thank you very much, Mayor Kelly.
Any other Older New Business from the council? I have two items then. The first reminder is that we have a primary election going on, and your ballots are due by August 7, so please... by August 7, so please remember to vote in our primary election. My second item is, this last weekend, I was very excited to join more than 700 cyclists and complete the Tour de Watcom. This is a great annual event that goes on in our community, that draws people from near and far, and I'm so excited I was able to accomplish 44 miles along with four so many other hundreds of cyclists. And I really want to thank the Watcom Events Organization that puts this event on. It really brings a lot of commerce to our community, and it really celebrates our recreational opportunities here in Bellingham. So I lift my hands to Watcom Events and all of the sponsors. And actually, the funding from so much of that event goes to the Watcom Mountain Bike Coalition, so I'm very happy to support that, too. Okay, so next, we will move on to executive session, and I will read a whole lot of words about the first item. It was litigation, Stoudt et al. versus City of Bellingham and David Frick. Staff provided information on a litigation matter. Under Bellingham Municipal Code 4.16.080 and state law, an employee whose actions are intentional or willful and wanton are not performed in the scope of the employee's duties is not entitled to be held harmless, indemnified, or defended by the city in a suit for damages that results from the employee's actions. The city council is responsible for determining whether the actions of an employee that give rise to a suit warrant defense and indemnification. I would like to entertain a motion to find that Mr. David Frick was not acting within the scope of his official duties as a city employee as it relates to this lawsuit, and that the city will not provide him with a hold harmless indemnification or legal defense in this matter.
No move.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded regarding this motion. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. The second item, I'm going to definitely seek further discussion on because it's one of the most exciting items that we've been holding our breath about for a long time. Staff provided information on a potential property acquisition. I would like to entertain a motion to authorize the purchase of a recreational use easement, conservation easement, and multiple access easements for approximately 2,182 acres in 26 tax parcels on Galbraith Mountain from Galbraith Tree Farm LLC for $3 million under the following terms. The city will pay $2,750,000 of the purchase price. Watcom Land Trust will pay the remaining $250,000 of the purchase price for its interest in the conservation easement. The city will make a one-time payment of $25,000 to the Watcom Land Trust to manage the conservation easement, and the estimated closing date for this purchase is August 20, 2018. So moved.
Second.
So moved by the whole council, and seconded by the whole council. Further discussion, please. I'll go with, I'll just start at this end and go the other. Councilmember Bornham.
Yeah, about 15 years ago, Mark Lee from the Watcom Mountain Bike Coalition, it wasn't called that then, was down, came down to my house, and we were talking, and he said, "Terry, we need to buy Galbraith Mountain." And we discussed how important that area was to, you know, for Bellingham, back then even, talking about the money that could be generated through recreational use with the growing mountain bike community, and to preserve that green backdrop. At that time, it was just a dream, as we thought, "How are we ever going to be able to do such a thing?" But people have worked on it that long, working towards this, and this is just, this is the dream come true. It's, I don't think, many of us didn't think we would be able to get across the finish line with this. We're not buying it, but we're getting that recreational easement, and we're preserving that beautiful green backdrop and the recreational opportunities for the citizens forever. And that accomplishment, that's taken a lot of work from a lot of people to get to that point, and I am so in favor of this.
I'm going to go down the line. Councilmember Lillquist.
So, yeah, that's been a long time. I remember seven or eight years ago, in a packed Bellingham High School, full of supporters of people who were urging the city to go and buy Galbraith Mountain to preserve it. But the price at the time was ridiculous. It was like, I don't know, I think it was like $20,000. It was, it was unrealistic.
$20,000?
Twenty, sorry, $20 million. It was unrealistic, and there was no way we could justify the expense. But over the years, the ownership has changed, the number has changed. I think we've moved away from what I think was a poor idea, which is to buy the property and move it out of productive use, instead to buy easements to keep it preserved for natural uses and for recreational uses. And all we need is to buy those easements. The land stays productive in multiple ways, it serves a public interest. And in addition, in seeing this incoming, these funds were already, earmarked is too strong a word, but they were already included in the Greenways III levy. These funds have been held back, and they're part of a voter-approved levy. It has been spelled out on the Greenways Plan for quite some time, that money was indeed set aside for access to Galbraith Mountain. So these are the funds that we're using. Those funds have, as I said, been sort of designated for a while. Formerly, they were never enough under this new deal, buying what I think will, what we need to buy, which are the easements. We do have enough money, and I will be supporting this.
Councilmember Vargas.
Every once in a while on City Council, you see something happen that you've looked at for years and years, that you think, "How are we going to do this?" And today feels very joyous for us because we get to do something that matters a lot to us and matters to our community. I serve on tourism, and I know that outdoor recreation is one of the top economies that we have in Watcom County. And for us to nourish that and to nourish our community who thrives in places like Galbraith Mountain is very exciting to be able to be a part of it. So today, I'm very proud of the city, and I'm also very proud of our community because these, Galbraith Mountain is taken care of all by volunteers, and that is amazing, and that shows how committed people are about preserving our wonderful land and making sure that we have access to wonderful outdoor recreation. So I want to thank also WMBC because they do great work, and thank the community for a really great day.
Okay, I'll take a turn. I'm just grateful to be a part of this community that so values recreation, to do everything I can to fight for the recreation that keeps us all alive, healthy, well, and having so much fun in our beautiful and gorgeous community. This has been a roller coaster of an experience, as I'm sure everyone who has been involved can attest to. We've had ups and downs, but I never lost faith, and I was never going to give up the fight because I want there to be mountain bikers in our community for every generation to come. And whatever Galbraith is going to evolve into is going to continue to support that recreation and that health and that vitality that our community needs and deserves. So you have no idea how excited I am to support this and to be a part of this with all of you. You know, to me, this is a chance of a lifetime to create the perpetuity of the recreational easement and the conservation easement, and I'm so happy to support it. Councilmember Hamel.
Sure, thank you. I think in addition to what's been said here, there are, there are also watershed protections. Part of the, part of the mountain is in the Lake Watcom watershed, so that's the drinking waters for 100,000 people, so I think that cannot be overlooked. I've spent a fair amount of time, probably should spend a little bit more time up there. But what I see is, what I've seen more and more over the years are groups of youth being led by adults. So that positive youth development is just another thing that I, that I see as a benefit for that mountain. A lot of those kids can ride better than I can, quite honestly. I'd like to thank the Watcom Mountain Bike Coalition, Watcom Land Trust for not, not giving up the faith, so to speak, and being partners in this effort. Their work is outstanding in this community. And I'd also like to thank the City of Bellingham staff who've been working on this for years now. Thank you.
Councilmember Vargas.
I like being at Thanksgiving dinner. Okay, it's my turn to say thanks.
I'll all get his leftovers.
I'll try to leave you something, a little morsel. Well, first of all, I, I do want to thank staff, and I think tonight, we saw an example of how beat up our staff can get when they're really working in the best interest of the city, but there's so many moving parts, and there's so many things we, we as laypeople often haven't thought all the way through of all the things that are going to be unintended consequences. And they do it, and they do it every day, and they keep coming back, and they keep doing it, and they have to sit there, and we can say something back, but, you know, they just have to take it. And this is a great example of our staff staying strong, staying focused on what the community wanted, the mayor staying focused on what the community wanted, the council keep pushing forward, and, and we did it. And of course, the community playing a huge part in that. But I, I know staff, we get few wins, too, and, and we, we're going to get a lot of accolades for this, but know that for everyone that we get, it's, it's coming right back at, at you all, so thank you, thank you very much. You know, I dropped my son off this morning, and I kept, I felt like I was going to have to apologize for leaving because I was so ready for the emergency phone call, because he was at a mountain bike camp today in the summer, and it was offered out to so many different kids. And so that one was led by adults, but typically, my youth lead me up the mountain, so I'm always following them. And, and I do think things like this, they're huge legacies. We were just talking about how we have these parks like Patton and Watcom Falls, and they were these amazing things that families gifted, you know, to cities, and wow, we're never going to get another one like that. And this is one of those legacy pieces that we'll be able to say, like, maybe our families didn't have all of that land, but we as a community came together and we got it. And I think it really bodes well to public health and mental health because, I mean, you're not joking when you say you should be up there more. It's just such a beautiful experience. I mean, you can, you see anything all the way to, well, hopefully, I won't run into a mountain lion, but, you know, you do see, you do see quite a bit of different wildlife, and just the opportunity for me as a family member to go with, like, all of the different age groups and to participate in that, and it's a healthy thing, and, you know, can be a minimal investment. It's, it's, it's an amazing part of our core, and I, I don't think we, I mean, we've learned a little bit from some surveys, but I don't know if we've really recognized what the mountain bike community that's growing here in Bellingham and the leadership that it can produce nationally and has been worldwide. So, super thankful, and I hope I left you something.
Councilmember Newton.
You did. Many, many thanks to a lot of people. Terry's absolutely right, this has been a long haul for many, many years. But I want to say something especially to some of the people that really didn't give up, because I have to have full disclosure. There were times when the county bailed out, and I thought, you know, this is going to be very difficult now, where in the heck, and how in the heck is this going to happen? And I remember the look on Leslie Bryson's face and Alan Mariner when they kept coming back and kept coming back and kept coming back, and the council kept saying, "Keep going, keep going, keep going." So this is what happens when everybody works together. So hats off to WMBC, hats off to Land Trust, big hats off to Leslie, the mayor, Alan, for not ever giving up. And this is just one of those days that the longer you hang around, the more good things happen. So, thanks to everybody.
I'd just like to add a couple quick more things. In case we get any scrutiny about why the city would do this, when it's not exactly in our city, let me explain. There are businesses that relocate to Bellingham just because of Galbraith. There are people that come to visit Galbraith on a trip, and they never leave. We get so many residents and so many visitors just because of that mountain. The events that will be held there will definitely help our city, our city revenues through hotel-motel tax. There's many advantages to us supporting this through the bike shops and through the events and through the quality of life that it brings. And I hope Galbraith Mountain will be the ultimate mountain biking Mecca forever. Mayor Kelly, please.
Well, I was going to thank the two staff members, but Jean stole my leftovers, so I'm without any. Leslie Bryson, our Parks Director, and Alan Mariner, that works in our City Attorney's Office. They worked as hard as anybody could work, and though it was difficult at the end, and you thanked our other partners, I also want to thank Rob Janiky because in the end, I believe that Rob saw the value in, in working with us to leave a legacy. And I have to appreciate that because working through the previous owner and the previous owner's son, and there were a lot of partners that we worked with, and I think that the person that was there in the end that actually made the deal ought to be thanked, too. So I thank Rob. And all of you for obviously going to be voting yes, right? Eh, thinking about it. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Kelly. Hey, Elizabeth, can we do a roll call on this?
April Barker.
Aye.
Dan Hamel.
Aye.
Jean Knutson.
Yes.
Michael Lillquist.
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy.
Yes.
Pinky Vargas.
Aye.
Terry Bornham.
A big yes.
Motion carries very unanimously. Thank you so much, everyone. Okay.
No.
We can clap. Next, we will move on to the mayor's report.
Thank you. I am going to give just a couple things that I have to do. I normally don't respond to public comment, so this is not really a direct response, but in case Amy's still listening, I actually was thanking the Lighthouse Mission for their shower truck, which they have, and if I'm mistaken, I will be happy to come back and correct that for the record. We're not talking about it right now, Amy, thank you. So anyway, I will correct that mistake if, if there was one made. Okay, so I'll hurry through this. I'm reappointing Charles Storrs and Erica Charbonneau to the Mayor's Neighborhood Advisory Commission, just for your information. And I'm also happy to announce the appointment of the members of the Climate Action Plan Task Force, all the letters, the words right. And this does require your approval. Lynn Murphy, Rick Nicholson, Charles Barnhart, Erin McDade, Christine Grant, Don Goldberg, Derek Long, Mark Sheffield, and Jill McIntyre-Witt to the Climate Action Plan Task Force.
Move, approval.
Second.
Motion has been made, and I'll give the second to Knutson. Is there any further discussion?
Oh, yeah.
Councilmember Vargas.
Did it, I thought we had to make a amendment to add a ninth member. Do we still need to do that, or no?
I think it's up to you. Brian?
We need.
Yeah, the, the, the direction said eight members, but I felt like there was another member that was less technical and more motivational. I guess that's the word I'd use. Anyway, and so I did appoint nine people, and I did say that if you, if we needed to amend the direction you gave us before, I'm perfectly fine with doing that, but I think it's important to have all the people on that I mentioned.
I just think for a policy, it would be good to amend the document so that it has, if it's that simple, we can just say we're okay with.
I think it's that simple.
Just make a motion to amend to have nine members.
Were we, was there already a motion on the table?
Very much.
Okay, so I'll vote to amend the current motion to include amendment to the.
A second.
Nine, nine members.
Thank you.
Okay, further discussion?
Yes.
Need to vote on the amendment.
What's that?
Need to vote on the amendment.
Okay, I was going to do, further discussion on the original motion or the amendment. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. The amendment and the motion carries. Okay, anything else, Mayor Kelly?
Okay, we can do them together, so with that, good night.
Consent agenda.
Move, approval.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Final consideration of ordinances.
Agenda Bill 21980, an ordinance of the City of Bellingham, Washington, amending multiple sections of Bellingham Municipal Code, Chapter 17.76, construction in the floodplains to update the chapter to meet FEMA's minimum standards for a FEMA participating community.
Move, third, final, second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roxanne Murphy.
Aye.
Pinky Vargas.
Aye.
April Barker.
Aye.
Terry Bornham.
Aye.
Dan Hamel.
Aye.
Jean Knutson.
Aye.
Michael Lillquist. Ordnance passes 7-0.
We are adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone.